Nice. I hear you coughing, Zach. Mr. Plummer.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. It'll be kind of dark here.
Yeah, trying to light my place up too. I don't think we've ever met. My name's John Emery. I'm one of the counselors.
One just second.
I love it.
Damn, go.
Your name was what?
John Emery. I'm one of the counselors.
Great, good to meet you.
Good to meet you. Now you are lit up now. Good to meet you. Now you are lit up now.
Are you live and in color Alan?
Here. Letting the dog out right now.
I don't have any picture.
You'll see my real face here in a minute.
Okay.
I hear you Keith.
Okay.
How are you all doing?
Good, how are you doing Derek?
Making headway. Trying to iterate.
Oh yeah.
Rose, I'm wondering if we can't hear you. Can you hear us at all? At the bottom of your screen on the left, there should be a button to join the meeting audio via computer if you can hear me.
Are you there?
Keith, on the bottom of yours, I'm wondering if it is, the camera is using the front camera. You may be able to switch between cameras.
Okay.
And if.
How do I do that? Do I have to get out of here?
I don't believe so. There may be a button around the bottom that'll allow you to do it. Or unmuted too. There you go Rose, I see your audio connecting now. You are unmuted, but you can mute yourself if you want.
Okay, uh, okay. It's a my, so am I muted? I'm not muted unless I push that button, right?
I hear you Rose.
Okay. Okay, is that you Alan? Who can he, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, how do I turn the volume up on this?
She'd have a button in the upper left Rose.
Upper left.
Upper left, you have to get on top of it and look. Should be a plus and a minus.
Okay, what do I want? Push the plus?
Yep, push the plus. Where you like it.
Okay, we're good to go. So what do I do now? Just sit here and wait? Okay, okay, thanks Zach.
And now we are all good.
I don't see a picture of Nick.
That's okay.
Rose, I see you on the screen. Who do you see?
I see Julie, I see Zach, I see myself.
Okay. Oh. Oh, there we go. Oh, alright. Can you see me now?
I can see you Joe.
Now yeah, your book's very good. I'm halfway through.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm on. Um, I'm having spotty internet issues though, so if I leave abruptly, that's why.
Okay, I've taken the waiting room off so people can come in and go. I don't think we're gonna get a run on the meeting today. Alan is helping me moderate, just to keep an eye on any Zoom bombing, but I'm not anticipating. but I'm not anticipating. If, if you are there, I think we can probably call it to order and start with the pledge.
I can't hear anything.
I hear you, Keith.
Okay. All right. So shall we start this meeting?
Yep. If you're gonna call it to order.
Oh, yes. We'll now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and which is under God
So, welcome to our April 14th meeting. If I can just do a quick update. We will be able to run the community comments from the public section. If there are people, we can raise hands when we get there or we can open it up for the phone lines. But I don't see anybody in via phone yet. And the only real difference under this situation is we will be doing any votes and procedures by roll call vote. So Keith, when we go to poll votes, if you can just call for the vote one counselor at a time, we will record those. And outside of that, we would be without any counselors absent, we'd jump right into general reports and meeting minutes for March 3, 5, and 16.
Do we need a roll, roll call? Or everybody's online?
Everybody's online. The council can speak if they unmute themselves.
Okay. Shall we?
How, how do we get to see everybody?
For the most part, this is gonna pop through. Whoever is talking should pop up on your screen.
Okay.
Shall we take 4.1? Yeah. I'll entertain the motion.
Keith, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes written for March 3rd, 5th, and 16th of 2020.
I second that motion.
I second that motion. Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm in favor. I'll start the roll call.
I'm in favor. And yes, that's a yes.
Yes, here also.
Yes, here also.
Natasha, are you still with us? You are muted. Let me double check that you can unmute yourself. There you are, Natasha.
Okay. Yes, I vote yes. I'm in favor.
And how's everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Keith?
Yes.
Before we get into the department reports, could I, could I say a couple of things, please?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'd, I'd like to thank all the council members for their sympathy and kindness in the passing of my mother. I, I appreciate all your thoughts and, and and expressions of sympathy. The other thing is, Mr. Chairman, I think we should do something to help the taxpayers of mechanic falls. Many who have lost their jobs through no fault of their own. I feel we should extend payment of the second half of their taxes from May 15th until June, July 15th with no interest penalty. This would give our citizens another 60 days. Other towns have done this extension, and I would like to offer this motion. And my motion would be, I move that we extend the May 15th tax bill until July 15th with no interest or penalty. Is that an appropriate thing to do?
Well, yeah, so we can, you, you need to have a second. That's all.
I would second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I guess it's time to, to vote.
I vote yes.
Yes, for Rose. Yes, for John.
Okay. And I'll vote yes.
John votes yes.
I, I, I think the townspeople will really appreciate that we're, we're offering to, to do this extension for them. Thank you.
Okay. I think we may have gotten out of order. We should have, should have suspended the rules in order to put that in, but it's already done. So we're gonna go to 4.2. Department reports as submitted. I'll entertain the motion.
I make a motion that we accept the department reports. That would be the, the police department, the public works department, and the water department.
Need, need a second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Uh, I'd like to ask if Jeff is there? How things are, are proceeding with with the stay at home rule? Has any of activities increased?
We, we've had no problems whatsoever. The guys are, you know, obviously taking it easy on something, but we have not had any stay at home issues yet.
No domestic violences, criminal mischief? Nothing is, is up out of the ordinary?
Nope. Nothing's up out of the ordinary. We're doing pretty well. The town's doing well.
Great. I appreciate that, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Did we have a second on this?
Yes, I seconded it, Keith.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, we'll take a vote.
I vote yes.
Yes, for Rose.
Yes, for Nick.
Ye- yes, for John.
Okay. And I vote yes. And I guess we've lost, Tasha.
No, I'm here, I'm back. I had to switch to my cellphone.
Actually, yes, we do. We were doing roll call for department reports.
Yes, I vote in favor.
Now, can you put the agenda back up? Because I don't, I don't see it.
Pulling it up right now. There you go.
Okay. No. I, assuming that we're not going to have a public hearing. No. And is, is there any one that, from the public that wants to comment?
If people, I believe everybody's in on a computer. If you can use the raise your hand icon, we can unmute you for that. Give it a minute, but I'm not seeing any hands go up. And we've got no one on the phone.
Keith, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
To the town manager, to Zach, can you tell us how many members of the public are actually online tonight watching this?
One, two, three, four. We got four members of the public on here.
Okay.
So there's no, no one that wants to make a comment. We'll go to old business. 7.122 Pleasant Street.
So this is the carryover. We are leaving up regularly, and there is, have, have been no showings, obviously, in the past few weeks. We will reengage here. Now we're getting into spring, and we'll readdress this at the next couple of meetings, I believe.
A question?
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. How long do we have the contract with the current real estate people? Is that Rock Foundation? Are we still with them?
It is the Rock Foundation. I will double check, but I believe it's up until August.
Up until August. And what have we got that listed for?
Was it 550 off the top of my head?
550?
I know we did a $5,000 reduction.
Okay. Does that include the, the six feet of extra land that we had to buy? Is that, is that the total price?
Yes, that would be both pieces of property.
Okay. And it's listed, and how much, how much did we? How much did we pay for?
The list price right now is 549,900, and we are with everything into it about 380.
380?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And, and no, I, I know it's difficult times, but no interest? No nothing?
Not that we have heard, and that there've been no showings. And I think right now, we're not gonna get a lot of showings yet. But
Yeah.
Russell, coming back into sale season, and if this opens up and people could start traveling and touring, I'm hoping we'll get some showings here.
Thank you.
I need the agenda again.
One minute. 7.2 council discussion topics.
Yeah. Anyone have anything they want to talk about?
Well, just when, when Rose does, when, when, when I can.
Go ahead, Rose.
Thank you. I had talked to Keith. Remember, we had discussed something about the police contract with the union, the association?
Yeah.
Having, having that, having our attorney, Jack, review it and send us a letter so we can have a neat package on that.
Zach has, has he sent you a letter?
Jack has reviewed it. Do you want me to have him reviewed again?
Well, I just, I just want a, want a letter that he's reviewed it, Zach, if we could, please. And that way, we can, we can move on and, and get that contract signed and have a cover letter that, that says that it's been reviewed by our attorney.
Okay. I will engage with him, and I will re-forward the packet to all of you that had what we have, as well as, as his input that we utilized in the process. And I will reach out to him again.
Okay. Thank you.
Nick, did you have something?
Yes, I did. Zach, excellent job with the COVID-19 virus. I think our town is practicing it very well. And you got the word out good. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you. I think most of that is gonna go to our first responders in the way they've been pulling it off. And we have been able to kind of get restocked. We're doing, from our meeting last Friday, we're a little bit more comfortable with the amount of PPE protection equipment. We do have, both of our first responding departments have worked on their own internal procedures and response policies, I think, really effectively and really quick so that, you know, their crew and our volunteers, when they're going into homes and working with people, they know the new procedures and they know really what to expect from us as well, you know, as an employer under this situation and, and what we're here to, to provide for them. We're trying to go above and beyond where we can. And people have been really creative with being able to pull off, you know, finding the resources that we did need so that they can keep responding the way that we normally. And people have been really creative with being able to pull off, you know, finding the resources that we did need, so that they can keep responding the way that we normally respond.
Wait, question. We, have we had anybody that's tested positive in the community, that you know of?
Not that I know of, or that I think we could disclose, no. I have not heard of anything.
Okay, I, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
True.
I would like us to, to do a workshop whenever the next available time is that we can get back to a public forum, meeting all together. It's been like a year and eight months, and Zach still hasn't had a review yet. I realize part of that is due to the fact of the situation that, that we're in right now. With certain issues, hopefully that'll be alleviated at that point, but we could sit down, and I know we had a training session in Bridston last year that told us different ways of going about properly giving reviews and whatever. If we could have a workshop to discuss that and agree on something so that we can get Zach a review like he deserves.
Thank you. I mean, we do have, kind of shooting for the June timeline again, and forwarded you all the first draft of what I'm hoping the next couple of months looks like with the modified schedule. It may push us a little bit, but I'm, I'm really hoping by, and the next month, we'll be able to start meeting together or within a limited capacity, but potentially push our kind of organizational meeting out into June. So if you haven't, I sent it out late this morning. We can review it and hopefully hash that final schedule out by our next meeting in a couple of weeks.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What you sent out, Zach, the mechanic fall spring summer 2020 schedule, do you want us to mail this back to you with our signature?
Nope, that's in draft form right now. I wanted to give it to you as early as possible. We only have two weeks before our next meeting. In order to follow suit with the state and move our municipal election to coincide with the new election day on July 14th, that would be an action of the council. I just wanted to get that into your hands as quick as possible, and then we can have a formal discussion about it at the May meeting and take action if we want to do that.
Thanks.
That does kind of iron out our schedule for the budget. I would, I'm still on track to do a budget meeting. What we want to make sure is when we get closer to elections, we have all of the warrants passed and approved and ready to go right now. That's really holding up our ability to get our annual report printed, because that's what a lot of community members use to review the budget and the proposals before they go to the vote. So I want to make sure that we get the warrants processed and finalized, so you can get the report out to the printer kind of as quick as possible. So if we shoot for that April 27th meeting for the next and hopefully the final budget meeting, then we can still approve the warrants at the May meeting and be pretty much on track for that.
Good.
A question for Joe.
Yes, ma'am.
Joe, you said that, that you attended a training session on evaluation or reviews for the town manager?
Yeah, yes, that was just part of the training session that we had, and all the counselors were there, save one, that I remember last year. So I know, I think Keith and Nick remember it. They gave it, they gave us a lot of literature to take home, examples of different towns and what they do. If we could get together, like I say, at work, maybe go over it together.
Okay, I was just wondering if some of those notes were available. I, I could read those. Did you say you did a training session, Joe?
Yeah, yeah, and Zach, did you go to that?
Yes.
I think it was just.
See if I have a packet left over that I can forward to you, Rose.
Okay.
Okay, I was, I was going to say that I think I have a book from that that I could let Rose take if she wanted to.
Okay.
Zach, I need the agenda again. This time I'm writing everything down, so. Okay. Audit.
So if the council's done, we would be jumping down to new business?
Yes, appointment of.
What we are looking to do is, Tasha, your hands up. Can you speak? Probably not, if I'm not hearing you, hold on, let me. There you go, Tasha.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't speak because I couldn't unmute myself.
Sorry, now you can.
I would like that packet as well. If you could forward me the packet, you're going to pack, send Rose.
Okay.
I haven't seen it either.
But we are on new business for appointment of election clerks. What we have the ability to do is appoint a slate of clerks for the entire year. This will run the election cycle through 2020. So the list, I believe, is in front of you, a screen sharing is working. You would be looking to appoint Nancy Petersons as warden, Michelle Emery, Allison Emery, Jacqueline Preston, Brenda Coleman, Patricia Young, and Gerald Vincent as election clerks for the year of 2020.
So move.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, let's take a roll call.
Yes for Rose.
Yes for Tasha.
Yes for Nick.
John abstains because of family members.
And I say yes.
Thank you. We will leave these with the clerks. Anything we need signatures for will be at the front counter, if any time you all can swing in and sign. And we will process that when we get to it. So going back to the agenda.
Hey, what's going on?
So, next up would be the, requesting the formal appointment and introduction of Alan Plummer, who is on the call with us as code enforcement officer, building inspector, health and safety officer. Alan's been onboarding for a couple of weeks now, getting caught up. We're about ready to start, we're going to start running some Zoom meetings for planning board and get those up and running again. And we are incredibly excited to have his experience and expertise on board with us right now.
I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Has he begun looking at the concerns and the complaints of the past?
I can, I can answer that. I haven't seen anything too far past. I have had some things on my desk when I showed up on April 1st, and I've been working on just a couple of things, but nothing back to speak of.
Excuse me, Nick, I didn't hear the last part of your sentence.
You remember the, the several concerns that many members of our town had, and I wondered if he had looked those over, or if he had jumped on them, or just want to know where they are.
Thank you.
Okay, how about a motion?
I make a motion to approve or appoint Alan Plummer as our new code enforcement officer.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
Keith, I'd like to ask Alan, are there any other towns in the state of Maine that you've been a code enforcement officer for?
No. I've never been a code enforcement officer before this. I'm happy to tell you my experience if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. I was a teacher for 15 years in the public school system, after that a trainer, another five years. During that time, I was a rental property owner. I had rental properties for about 15 years. I managed and owned several units. Went to building school years ago at Shelter Institute in Woolwich. Have worked on six or seven habitat humanity houses, built the house I currently live in. I consult.
It's 7 o'clock.
I consult with people for building their own houses as well. Was a veteran of the US Army for six years. I'm currently a FEMA responder, although I've given notice that I can't respond. I had to turn down actually a deployment request just last week. So they understand that I'm no longer available for that. Most recently, I was on the Senate staff with the Maine State Senate in the Senate chamber, and over the last six or seven years, I've been pretty active with various affordable housing activities.
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate that.
Well. Yeah, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
Anyone else?
I'm good to go.
Did we get a second?
Yes, Tasha seconded.
Okay. Then to have a roll call vote, I say yes.
Yes for Rose.
Yes for Nick.
Yes for Tasha.
Yes for John.
Okay. The next item is the audit.
So what we have is, this is just the presentation of the audit. I wanted to get it in and just accepted by the council. When things do calm down, we get a little bit of extra time. I'd still like to do what we did last year and invite Amanda Smith and Associates to come and present the audit to you and kind of go over all the findings and the process, so she can answer your questions more in detail. But for where we are in our fiscal year, I want to get this in and accepted, so that we can turn around and report it back out to our lenders as well, the way we have to. So this would just be a motion to accept it.
I'll entertain the motion.
I make a motion to receive the receipt of the town financial audit.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have, I have kind of a question. On the, on the audit, I guess they were wondering about record retention policy. Is that something that we'll be working on indicating which records are retained and for how long? Also, the method of destroying confidential information. Is that, that's located on page two of the Smith and Associates CPA report. So I don't know if that's something you could check in for us, check into for us, Zach. Julie, how do we dispose of our confidential information?
We do go over that with them when we work with them through our interview process. We do not have a formal standalone policy that the town follows right now. Julie and the clerks work on the state policy, but it is something, it's been a standing request that we can work on drafting our, and hopefully one that references more substantially the state protocols as those change. We won't have to keep re-reviewing them and re-updating them, but we'll have something of our own on hand.
Okay, all right. That's the only thing that I noticed in that report. Thank you.
Zach, there were no other red flags, were there?
No, not like, kind of last year, and there's always the, the standing ones. But they were things that have been carryovers, but we've cleaned up kind of those community accounts, and that was really the big thing that we were tackling last year. And I will pull in, based on Amanda's availability, whenever we can be able to meet in person again and have her walk us through the whole thing.
Okay.
So next was the FOAA policy. I know that, especially given our circumstances, there's been a request to just table this and carry this forward if we want to take that route.
Zach, I think we need to vote on the last one.
Yeah.
Sorry, let me get ahead of you there. All right, off the bat of the light.
Okay, I'll vote for the acceptance of the audit.
Yes for Rose.
Yes for John.
Yes for Tasha.
Yes for Nick.
Okay, now, 9.1, the FOAA.
Could I make a motion to table that? FOAA proposed changes to the first open meeting that we would have with the public. I don't know if that would be May 4th, that's, that's right around the corner. If not, May 4th, then maybe the, the June meeting.
We can carry it until the emergency's lifted and, and we'll pull it back up when we get there.
I appreciate that. I would move that motion.
I second the motion.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote. I vote yes.
Yes for Rose.
Yes for Tasha.
Yes for Nick.
Yes for John.
Okay, now is the, I did, what is it, 9.2? Is that right?
Yes, that's the next one, Keith.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Nick.
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize to all of you, Mr. Chairman, counsel, and Zach. I'm in the process of getting legal counsel. I think that the lawyers for our town did an excellent job, as, as did Mr. Lee. But I'm uncomfortable signing anything right now until I let legal counsel for me personally look over this whole package, and I do apologize to all of you. I would like to make a motion that we table this until at least our next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Any, any other discussion?
I don't think this, well, it's, it's tabled, so I guess no, no other discussion.
Okay. So we need to take a roll call though.
I vote yes on table.
Yes, for Tasha to table it.
John?
I vote yes to table it.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's 9. Okay, so it's 9.3. The manager's performance.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I would like to table this as I am seeking, um, legal counsel in this matter. Until our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't get, um, a legal counsel, uh, for, for the council people, um, um, to have any of their questions answered that they have concerns about, so we can move on with this.
We.
I, I don't, I, and I'm, I, I want us to have, the council to have their own attorney. Uh, that's just a suggestion I'm throwing out there. Uh,
Well, I think, uh, if I'm not, uh, not mistaken, the town has a lawyer that, that's for the council in general. But any individual, uh, has to, if they have, uh, issues, have to, uh, hire their own lawyer.
And I'm good with that. I am.
We.
I think that's the way it goes. Now, I could be wrong.
Uh, I, I, I don't know. I just, uh, was wondering if, if that is, is, is available to the council, um, so they can have some of the issues resolved. Um, but, uh, I'll, I'll let that go.
Well, uh, I, I think in, in, uh, if, if you remember the letter that came with the agreement from, um, Jonathan Brogan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that if the individual, um, counsel, counselors that, uh, were, some, some of the counselors and other people that were named, of course, it was the other people that were named there, uh, wouldn't have anything to do with the council, but the council would have to have their own lawyer. Because he represents the town. And Jack represents the town, not individual counsel. And I'm not sure what issues, uh, uh, come up that would require, uh, separate counsel.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
That's just it, sir. I don't know. I am your basic proletariat and I just, I feel comfortable with everything. I just want to have a little bit of closure on this, on my terms. That's it. And I'm more than willing to pay for this.
Okay, now, we had a motion, a second. Any more discussion?
Yes, just, just, just a minute. I lost my train, I lost my train of thought. Um, oh, well, um, is not the whole council, uh, are we not entitled to, uh, have somebody come in and talk to us? Or, I got it, Keith. Uh, Jonathan, in Jonathan Brogan's letter, he also stated that, that he would gladly, uh, sit down and explain things to us. I think, uh, that might be, um, something that we should research out.
Okay, uh, I can call him and have him, uh, at our next meeting, or try to.
Okay, I, I think that might help. Nick, would that help you out at all?
Well, again, he represents the town of Mechanic Falls and, and, and all attorneys did an excellent job. I think this is okay. I just, I just wanna have, just wanna make sure, that's all. I, unless John Emery wants somebody also, I don't think, um, yourself or Tasha needs, uh, any of this, but I would just feel better. And I do apologize again for throwing a wrench in this.
Nick, I don't feel like I need the, the representation that you're talking about, but I do respect your, uh, desire to have one. And I'll, I'll go along with it.
Thank you.
Okay, it's, uh, that's your vote, John?
Say, say what, Keith?
That's your vote?
To table it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes for Rose.
Yes for Tasha.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll say yes, just for the record.
Thank you.
Now, is there any other business that we have? None. Okay, no. Uh, I don't need the agenda anymore, Zach. You could take it away.
I make a motion to adjourn?
You have a second?
I second the motion.
All right, all, uh, any discuss, uh, discussion? If not, we'll vote. I vote for a journey.
Yes for Rose.
Yes for Nick.
Yes for John. So I guess we're all done.
We are good. Thank you all for, uh, participating and we will all be in touch.
Zach, 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 are you still there? Zach?
Can you hear you?
No. Keith?
Yeah.
Zach, anybody still on here?
Yeah.
Is the office open at all? Is the office, the office is open to where we can get in and get some of these forms or whatever, or anything we need to sign?
Just call the office first and we'll come down and unlock the door.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.